Hey Chief, wanna test your, oh, we're live. Okay, I was gonna ask the Chief to test his microphone, but since we're gonna get started, okay. Okay, so good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this virtual Committee of a Whole Meeting. The meeting can be viewed on HPA TV Comcast and Frontier Government Channels ninety-six and sixty thirty-two. Also, the meeting, the virtual meeting is also streamed at hpatv.org and is rebroadcast on HPA TV YouTube channel. I am now calling the, to order the Committee of a Whole Meeting for today, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The members of the committee who are here today is, we have our Majority Leader Marilyn Rosetti. We have Councilmember Emil Carr Hernandez, Councilwoman Kelly Billidoo, Councilwoman Molly Rosado. Don't see any other councilmembers who are part of the committee. But we also is joined by our Town Clerk Eric Lusa and our Corporation Council Jonathan Harding. Ah, we do have Councilman Josh Mitchum here. And Lou Wilson's joining us. We also have our Director of Public Works, Director Chris Hayes. I don't, if I'm missing anyone, please let me know. I don't see anyone else here. Okay, so, but if I miss anyone, please let me know. So there's only one item, one item on our agenda tonight, and that's item two point one, which is a resolution from Mayor Aralampalum confirming the appointment of James C. Rovella as Chief of Police for the Hartford Public, Hartford Police Department. And I want to also welcome Chief Rovella here tonight with us.
Thank you very much.
Great, Chief, wonderful. We have sound from you, great. Chief Rovella, welcome again. And if I remember correctly, we have done this before. So you should be, you know, hold hat doing this. And so the process for the evening will be, you will be welcome to give an opening statement. And after your opening statement and any comments you will have, I will open the floor up to our councilmembers for any questions and also comments. So Chief, the floor is yours, please welcome. And tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, why would you wanna be your police chief again this year?
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Council President. My name is James Rovella. I'm honored to be nominated as the next Chief of Police for the City of Hartford. And you're right, I've done this before. My career first started in Hartford in nineteen eighty-one. And from there, after retirement, I went to the Office of the Chief State's Attorney and built the cold case units around the state. I eventually became the Supervisory Inspector and later the Chief Inspector of the State's Attorney's Office. From there, you know, we came back to the city, a group of us for the Shooting Task Force. And I left the Chief State's Attorney and became the Chief of Police for the City of Hartford for approximately five and a half years. Took some time off in between, and then I thought I found the perfect job. It was the Colonel and Police, the Director of Law Enforcement Services were deep. So parks, beaches and forests, and so the Governor called and offered me the Commissioner at the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. And that was, that was a big job considering there was over fifteen hundred people. We had this, I oversaw six different divisions, all with public safety, and I was the Homeland Security Director for the Governor also. And there was some tough years between COVID in there and the adaptation of keeping law enforcement going and serving the state citizens and particularly our bigger cities around the state. After that, I did take a little more time off. And the Mayor gave me a call and asked if I'd be the interim Chief of Police for the City of Hartford, and I was honored to do that. And so he called me a couple weeks ago and offered me the full-time job, and I accepted. And that leads me here. Last time, my wife and I lived in Hartford for five and a half years. She's already started packing up the apartment in Old Sabre, so she's already preparing. She's picked out three different apartment buildings where she's had some fondness too, so we'll be looking at those soon. So that's not an issue for me, ladies and gentlemen. I enjoy living in Hartford and walking to work and going to different places, different events. But while I was interim, I wanna point out that I intentionally stayed out of the community because I didn't wanna interfere with the process of the other candidates. But now it could be different based on your approval. I'll probably spend quite a bit of time in the different communities, getting to reacquaint myself with folks. Folks have already called me, and I've met with a few of them already. So it'd be an honor to get your approval, and I look forward to your questions, and hopefully I'm prepared to answer them all.
Oh, thank you, Chief, and thank your wife for us again.
I will.
You know, allowed you to again serve the residents of the City of Hartford. We also joined, I believe, by Councilman John Gale. So I am gonna open the floor up for questions and comments from any other councilperson. Just raise your hands so I can see everyone. Majority Leader Rosetti.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Chief. It's, it's good to see you. So first, it is very refreshing to hear that you're moving to the City of Hartford and actually moving to the City of Hartford. I won't go any deeper into that, but for people who know what I'm talking about, they know what I'm talking about. I, you know, certainly, I appreciated the process. I was surprised when told of this, but also understood the reasoning. My, I was told, and I believe you will touch on it, that this is also an opportunity for growth in within the department. This is also an opportunity for you in the next few years to either identify or, or prepare a path for people to serve in a leadership position for the next search that will be able to actually promote from within, which I think is always an incentive for people. It's, it's a great way to do it almost in any organization you're in. How do you, you know, do you maybe not have concrete, but what are your, what are your ways on how you're gonna do that? What kind of opportunities, classes? How is that gonna play out that you will have this path forward for people to eventually take on some type of leadership role like Chief? Thank you.
So one of the first things I did was ask them for their resumes or ask them for their span of control of the department. You know, I can't say enough good things about the officers that work here and stayed here and are devoted to the city and go out there every single day. So the pathways for the next election really revolve around, they revolve around education, they revolve around training, but they also revolve around, let's get into the community. And I've already told them that, that we're all gonna go into the community, we're all gonna start hitting meetings, they're all gonna see us out there. Not only are we gonna see the officers, but we're gonna see the folks that live in these communities. And we have some very real, honest conversations with these folks. There are some issues that we're gonna take care of in our NRZs. Almost immediately, we're gonna make some impact. And others are gonna be longer term. The longer term ones are gonna be examined by these folks and come up with different plans, right? So really, they're gonna start to mature. They're mature now, but they're gonna start to mature into your next leaders.
So, so not to be able to tell the future, Council President, if I may. Certainly, there's some anticipation now on who may be, you know, on a chief path, but there'll be opportunities along the way for that to be either supplemented or filled, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, that, that was really my, you know, interest, Council President. Thank you, and thank you, Chief.
Good question, Majority Leader. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Madam President. So Chief Rovella, I, I know that, you know, from the beginning, since you started as the interim chief, one of the first conversations and one of the first things that you talked about a lot was, you know, turning the tide on this recruitment process. Can you now, in this forum, speak a little bit about how that has gone so far? And I know there's been a lot of success in, in some of the approaches that you've taken, but as, as the, as the now permanent chief of police, can you talk to us a little bit about what would be different that we were not doing before perhaps that now, you know, you will tackle as far as the recruitment piece, which is, which I, we know is the critical component of, of, you know, one of the biggest challenges and needs that we have in the Police Department?
So Councilman, great question. And it's a little longer of an explanation, if you don't mind. The first task I have is stemming the tide of our younger officers going to different departments, right? Because we train them, they get some years in, and then they, they've left for other departments. So that is the very first point where we have to interject. And really, that was done by offering them training, them seeing a chief around, conversation, and telling them that they are in the cusp of probably some of the momentous changes or opportunities in this Police Department, right? As we promote, as people retire and we promote, it's gonna open up positions not only in supervisory positions, but it's gonna offer detective positions, it's gonna offer special teams. So these young men and women are gonna have some phenomenal opportunities. So they should stay and watch those opportunities. So the next part of your question, I think, is how do we recruit? And how do we get up to the numbers that are really operational numbers for us, right? So I know you came to our first graduation where we put out nine. We're gonna have, we had two officers come out of Post Academy on top of that. We have three in New Britain ready to come out in October. We have a class in now of ten recruits plus some others, so they're coming out. Good representation by race and gender also there. We are gonna start dual classes, meaning we're having one class get out in front for a month or two, and then we're gonna start another class at our academy. And HR has done a wonderful job producing lists for us. So we're gonna start to increase our academy staff. And when I have a stray person here and there, I'm gonna send them to different academies. So the other component there is lateral hires. Folks that wanna come back home. We've had a couple that have already come back, that we've taken back. You know, my interviews today were with four officers, three of which I accepted back, and the fourth one, as soon as he clears Occupational Health, be back. So that's another part of it, how do we attract the laterals? So how do we promote and how do we get, right to the crux of your question, how do we get these folks to understand that this is a great job, this is a great city to work for, right? So we broke recruiting into two sections. Steve Austin will do the city side of recruiting. And I think most of the folks know Steve Austin, Sergeant Austin. He's very good at communication, he's very good at recruiting these kids, he's very good at schooling these kids and instructing them what they can do and can't do and preparing. So he's gonna have the inner, the, the inner-city folks and my cadets too. And that's a conversation we should have too about cadets. We wanna fill those positions because those are officers we make. So outside, I decided to go much different. We have a young lieutenant who has now attacked, attacked vigorously technology. And, and I think our kids are moving that way, or they're already there. They want to see stuff pop up on their phones, they wanna see it pop up on their, their pads. They want instant information. So we've created a very big joint HPD site where you can actually see what you're getting into, what divisions are here, who leads those divisions, and how to be recruited here. And we're gonna show them the opportunity. That opportunity is huge here. I'm getting a huge request from the Hispanic population that come to work here. They see a lot of good opportunity. And the kids are coming, they'll, they'll be back. So my task will be to, as I look forward to attrition, I have to match and be prepared for that attrition years down the road. So I have to continue to hire folks. And M and B's been great with us too. I can't say enough good things about those folks. And procurement, you know, when you, when you have to outfit the, the officers, they've been, they've been great too.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Madam President.
That was a long one, huh?
Oh, that was great. Councilman Mitchum?
Thank you, Madam President. Y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Chief Rovella, a few, well, let's say, questions on three areas. One is, and honestly, I, I hope you haven't heard me talk about this because while you've been away from the city, you've been not paying attention to our politics for the sake of your sanity. But on the off chance, you may have heard me bring up with your predecessor the size of our force, right? We have per capita a very, very large police force. And I always sort of, like, I think right now we have three sixty-something, three seventy. And I, he'd always said that we should be at four sixty-something, about a hundred. I was never really able to get a clear explanation of why our force should be so very large compared to similarly sized cities. Would you continue to aim for that, that four sixty-something number?
Okay, so on your first question, I have three hundred and fifty officers with cadets in the, our recruits in the, the academies. So first time around as chief, you know, we had some analysis done, and they were up around the four eighty-one number for the Quite frankly, I'll never get there because I'm watching attrition too. My goal, even though that should be to keep up with attrition and to exceed attrition, right? So I'm funded for four hundred and ninety-one officers, and some of that is cops grants funding. So yeah, we were around four forty, and I had to strip some places and units. And I don't think four number to be operationally sound and fill all your communities and fill your specialized units. If not, the result is you wear these kids out. And I think that is part of the, the flight from the Police Department is that they were just worn out cars, and they're big investments on our part through recruiting and training. They're just huge investments. We can't afford to lose those folks.
Thanks, and, and if you're chief, will you, you mentioned an analysis from back when you were chief before. I know Chief Thody had sort of mentioned that he had done, or some analysis was done that got to those numbers, but he never shared that. Would you share that analysis for, to us as the sort of, the per strength controller so we could understand why we carry such a large police force?
Sure, I'll, I'll find that and I'll send it over to the Council President. It goes back, I wanna say two thousand seventeen maybe? Or sixteen? But I'll, I'll, we'll dig that up and try to find it for you and send it over.
Okay, thank you. Different, different topic. About the process when there are complaints against officers involving both the Internal Affairs of HPD and the Inspector General. I just, I have a que, and I'm gonna sort of say as I understand it, and you correct me if I get it wrong because I suspect you'll know better. But when there's a complaint against an officer, the first step is that HPD Internal Affairs investigates on its own, right?
Uh, no. Okay, so you can make complaints against officers at various sites, including the IG's office. Once we take in a complaint against an officer, the IG then gets all the documents soon afterwards. So they get the, the documents that we're looking at, the complaint. And then from there, they have investigators and we have our sergeants that do it too.
Because mine, and I, I had a conversation recently with the Inspector General, and my understanding from him was that, and this, this is more referring to the preceding chief's practice, that the department would do its investigation and then turn over the investigation to the IG to presumably await is looking at it. Sorry, my counsel aide here wants to next. Sorry.
I got it, yeah.
But, so then the, the department does the investigation, this is how he explained to me, and then it turns it over to him, and then he, you know, has to offer his either similar recommendation or different, and then it goes to the chief to sort of choose between those. And there's a process if the Inspector General disagrees. Is that, is that right?
No, it's, it's a parallel investigation, right? We're, we're sending him things, and he has independent investigators of his own. And we're trying to match up the timeframe. I believe he has forty-five days and I have sixty days. And I wanted to stay close to that because if it is founded a complaint, I wanna make adjustments in the officer's behavior or training. So we're trying to line that up. I understand it is a policy of the city and it's in the ordinances. You know, the IG and I will get together and try to iron out some of the nuances that are going on today that we're gonna try to get through.
Because the concern he expressed to me, and I had heard a similar thing from the preceding IG, was that the way the records would be delivered from HPD to the IG, the timing between that moment and when the chief would say, okay, here's my decision, made it so that the Inspector General didn't have enough time to do his own independent investigation. So can you commit at least to adjusting that timing so that the Inspector General can always have enough time to do his job and make his recommendation before you make a decision?
I'm gonna first check on the process to see if we're, what you're actually saying is in tune. My understanding is that the IG gets these reports for his investigators also. And at the end, the IG makes a recommendation. I have a recommendation, and I have to pick between the two, or they're not that much different most of the time. We find on specific complaints, the IG finds more on a little broader complaint. But I'd have to do a little more research on that to, just to commit to that.
Okay, and thank you for that answer. And my last area of inquiry is about cooperation with the federal government, particularly as it relates to immigration enforcement. I mean, and you know, the state has the Trust Act, which sort of tells local departments only to cooperate with the feds in a limited way. What it doesn't have is any enforcement mechanism if the local departments or even individual officers violate that, that law. What steps will you take as chief to make sure that your officers are not cooperating with the feds on immigration questions?
So there's only a couple areas that we can cooperate with the feds. My officers are very well trained on what they can do and can't do in regards to our departmental order. And there is a, there is a bite at the end if they violate our department order, right? And they shouldn't. So the areas we can agree on are convicted of an A and B felony or an active arrest warrant or, or a thing that poses a terrorist threat, right? Absent of that, the department does not cooperate with ICE. So it's here and there, meaning the officers have to follow the department order where there's issues for there. So there is a penalty for it.
What, I mean, I'm sure it's not the same every time, but what is the penalty? What's the, what's the incentive to follow the department order for the officer?
Well, you're in the area of either negligent or intentional failure to follow policy. And so that would be an area, after an investigation, that would be an area of the code of conduct you would fall into.
Give me a concrete example of what that means. Is that like a suspension, is it a write-up, a training?
Well, it's usually a write-up by supervisor that goes up to their own affairs and gets investigated. At the conclusion of the investigation, if the officer is found to have violated our department procedures and policies, and they fall into a negligent or they fall into a willful, they're subject to, and there's different steps they go through. You could fall into an oral reprimand, a written reprimand, and then you start climbing into your days off, suspension days. So there's penalty associated with it.
All right, last question on this or any topic.
There's other people who have to have their questions too.
I know, but please, it's important. But this is the last one, I'm telling you. Chief, on the same topic, though, you said, you know, A and B felonies because that is what the Trust Act permits. It's worth noting that, and, and terroristic threats. In pre, you know, when that law was written, we had some assurance that someone who was, you know, charged with an A or B felony, regardless of their immigration status, would, you know, get due process, right? They would go to court, they would have counsel. You know, even if they weren't convicted, what they might be is just deported to their home country. What we have now is the risk of indefinite detention in a third country where they're subject to torture. We also have a federal government that kinda calls anyone it doesn't like terrorists. So the, would you maybe consider just not cooperating at all for the good of the city and its residents, who, even if they're charged with an A or B felony, probably deserve more due process? who, even if they're charged with an A or B felony, probably deserve more due process than the feds will give them?
So let me give you just an example. Well, let's skip the example. I have to follow the law. First of all, you follow the state law. And I have to follow that. I don't want to diverge from that at all. But I don't know of any points presently that we've cooperated or offered the ICE group any assistance moving forward or in the past.
Will you commit to not offering any assistance to ICE, even logistical when they're in the city? They should be enemies to us.
Well, I can't afford them for to get, if they get attacked, I have to go and stop the attack, right? It's just like anybody else in life. If it's outside of the statute, there's be no cooperation, but I have to stay within the statute. I can't commit to just zero period.
What about when they're making seizures without warrants? That's a kidnapping under state law. Would you admit they're being there to protect our, well, this is an important question.
I understand that, but we also have to understand that I'm going to.
I'll yield my time to Councilman Mitchum. I think he's entitled to ask the question.
But this is a policy subject matter that I believe you should take up with the council and the mayor. And also where we do have, we are also have state statutes which, you know, we have to follow. So this is where I will jump in and say to our proposed, our police chief is that, you know, the policies our city have and also the policy of the city of Connecticut is what I would like to see him follow, what are those principles are.
Precisely what I'm asking about.
So that's what I'm going to jump in and say, as we are all policymakers on this body.
Noted. And so let me frame my question and I'll be done. Our state prohibits, for example, kidnapping and prohibits battery. The reason that for a police officer of the Hartford Police Department, taking someone and putting them in custody is not a battery or kidnapping is because they're acting under authority of law. If ICE comes in and they don't have a warrant, they're not acting under authority of law. They're acting criminally. Would you authorize the department to protect our citizens from criminal action?
I'm going to, chief, can I answer that for you?
I asked the chief.
Yeah, but I'm also going to step in as a policy.
Madam President, with respect, your job, no one is choosing you for a job right now, but we are choosing him for a job. I want to know what he thinks. We can always do policy. I appreciate that, but I want to know what his position is.
To follow our policy that we have on the books. That's definite for sure. But our policies are and the state policies for him to follow those within the guidelines that we will have given him. So chief, do you want to continue to answer those questions?
I think you're right on track, Council President. You know, we follow the law, we follow the policies of the city department.
Thank you.
My question, if I could, and I'm sorry to be a pain, but my question is, where the feds violate state law without authority from any law, will the will Hartford Police step in to protect our residents? That I am talking about city and state law and whether he will enforce it. That is my question. Or do the feds get a blank check to violate state law? That's my question. I think that's very relevant and actually the way Madam President framed it is excellent. That is our policy. That is our law.
Thank you for that.
What will the police department do? My that's my question to the chief. What will the police department do in the face of federal law breaking?
Chief, because I will certainly, I'm sticking to my same philosophy of whatever policies we have on the books, whatever ordinances we have passed, whatever the state of Connecticut is, I hope you will follow those to the extent of those ordinances and laws that are on the books for you to follow. So Councilman Mitchum, I'm going to move on from there. I see, did somebody else have their hands up? I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Billidoo and then Councilman Gale right afterwards. I can't hear you, Councilwoman.
Sorry about that. I was trying to get my, thank you, Council President. I was trying to get my phone off of mute. I just want to say thank you to the chief for agreeing to take this role back on. It is a important and, you know, critical role for the city and you have a lot of great experience and you're bringing that back to the city of Hartford. So I just want to thank you for that and, you know, making a true commitment, speaking about moving back into the city and, you know, having a firm commitment to our city. So I just want to ask one question. If you can't answer it, that's fine because I know that you spoke about giving the NRZ something that they wanted, but if you want to save it until, you know, you announce it at those meetings, that's fine. But I'm just wondering if it's any relationship to maybe reallocation of resources or something of that sort.
Councilwoman, good evening. Really, when my captains go out to these NRZs, most of the folks are satisfied, but they do point out quality of life issues, right? That are so very, very important to our residents. And they begin to revolve around speeding or reckless driving. They revolve around these these packs of motorcycles and quads. They revolve around people violating stop signs and as school approaches. You know, the buses are out there and folks that do these reckless drivings are going to pass these buses. So the first initiative we're going to have is especially around schools and areas both in the morning and in the afternoon to start to change the behavior of some of these drivers, especially with all these kids are going to be out there.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Councilman Gale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following right up on that, chief, and good evening, good to see you as always. Red light cameras, we seem to have gotten somewhat stalled in moving forward with those and we see that other towns are having some degree of success in getting people's conduct to conform a little bit. Any idea where we are in Hartford and where we might be?
No, I don't know where the red light cameras are. We did have a lot of conversation when it first came out about the speed cameras in and around schools, but that is stalled also. I don't know exactly why it's been stalled. I will point to you, I think the Department of Transportation does put out some nice booklet. It actually walks everyone through about how to get these cameras installed and the permissions that go with it. It's being marshaled by one of the captains in the patrol area. So it's, it'll probably be a little higher on the list, but I don't know how it got stalled.
Well, certainly from my standpoint, anything you can do to help move it forward would be appreciative and it helps with all of our traffic enforcement and not with while not using. Heart Team, what's your what's your sense of how well the Heart Team's been working and what do you see as the future for that?
Well, let's not cut them out anywhere. They're a valuable resource to the officers on the street. You know, these these EDPs are really starting to overwhelm us and motion to disturb people. There's quite a few. The Heart Team does supply valuable resources and really gets our officers back to the street.
Lastly, CSO for the West End, is there anything that's in the works for that?
There was one put back there about a week and a half ago.
Ah, I'm behind the times. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. I and I just want to just sort of add a comment and I, you know, I can appreciate that you may not want to answer Councilman Mitchum's question. It's a very sensitive area. It's a very sensitive time in America. It's a very troubling time in America, but from and so I'm not pushing on that, but I do want to make a comment to Council President. I think it's inappropriate for you as Council President to interrupt a councilman who's duly elected, who's entitled to ask questions for somebody who's going to be appointed by this body. So I just want to register my complaint that in the future, I don't think it's appropriate for you to step in when any of us are asking a question and provide the answer in lieu of the witness. Chief Revella has a long a long reputation. I'm sure he can stand up for himself. And if he doesn't want to answer a question or says it's too sensitive an area, he can deflect in many different ways, doesn't need Council President protecting him. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do see we have Councilman Thomas who has joined us. Councilman Thomas, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I do understand and appreciate Councilman Gale's point. I do think and agree that Councilman Mitchum should have the ability to ask any questions that he wants. And I do understand it's a sensitive time and a sensitive subject, but I would agree with his thought process that Chief Revella can can defend himself for sure. But I definitely don't even think it's something that he needs defending from. It's a it's a conversation. But yeah, just wanted to say that and welcome back, chief. Glad to have you and appreciate your service to the city. And it seems like a lot of people, and myself included, are happy that you're back. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Councilman Rosado.
Hello, chief, how are you?
Hi, Councilman, how are you?
Good, good. Chief, I have a question. How will you support officers' wellness given the stress and demands on the job?
Yeah, so that was a that was a huge endeavor when I was with the state for the troopers. And it's two parts, right? It's officer wellness, it's organizational wellness. So the organization wellness part of it is how the officers feel about their organization and how the folks they serve feel about the police department. Officer wellness here is going to be quite some time, right? We have a officer dedicated to EAP, which could be three kind of word letters that folks resist. But we have to make officers, even in President Obama's six pillars, the sixth pillar was keeping officers well. And I kind of think that's number one because if you have a well officer financially, mentally, at home and confident with their job, they often do better at their job. So part of that includes some training that they've never seen before. It includes opening the doors to some organized physical fitness. We have runners here that we're opening the doors to and just trying to communicate a lot better with them. And that's done by chiefs that walk around the hallways and myself that gets to talk to these kids and really make a difference in their lives. More will come on that.
Councilman Rosado, you?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, chief. I'm looking forward to working with you once again and I'm doing great things for our city. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
So chief, I also have a from residents, from a residence who's actually on HPA TV and listening to the Cow meeting. And the residents would like to know, would like to get an update. What are your plans updating the code of conduct posting for the public? I think she said or he said 100% of it is not published and it's old and outdated.
I agree with the old and outdated. And that was a conversation we started with the Hartford Police Union. Lieutenant's on vacation, but it's it's going to need a committee to discuss a brand new code of conduct and the penalties that go with the code of conduct. So the ball is beginning to roll on that. Publishing it really isn't a problem. So it'll start to roll, but it takes quite a few people.
Okay. The next question is, any plans for outsourcing EAP for officer wellness based on strategic initiative and priorities shared during the budget hearings?
EAP is somewhat outsourced. We have a dedicated officer here, but all our services go outside to different psychologists or different doctors. So it's outsourced in that respect. They're professionals that we would prefer.
And last question they have is, any incentive to have officer live in Hartford? 90%, 95% of the staff are non-Hartford residents. Do you have any initiative on that, living, officers living in Hartford?
Well, I don't think I have an initiative there. I think that's a discussion between myself, the mayor, the council to promote more folks that want to live in the city and enjoy the city. And I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Okay, thank you, chief. So if you, those were the questions from one of our residents who was listening. So for my question and my comment, the way that you've certainly been supportive of you was not too happy when you went on to the state to lend expertise. And I'm also happy that you are back in Hartford again and want to give back again to the residents and want to appreciate you and your family, you know, allowing you the time, you know, to do this again. One of my issues has always been is the the wellness, the well-being of our police force. You know, we've got a little, over the years, we have a little morale, people leaving. Any initiatives in trying to get the morale up and going again? I've heard you talked about, you know, people coming back in, police officers who have left the city would like to come back and work for us again. What other priorities do you have in uplifting the morale, you know, within the department?
Today morale is pretty good and it's built around the initiatives that it first began when I came back. You know, just briefly, the training opportunities, the the different areas. We haven't had these orderings that really chase these kids away. I think we've only had a couple shift continuations. So if we can stay away from that, I think kids are going to, our younger folks are going to stay here and they're going to see the future. Moving on though, I think what they're all waiting for is something that we'll all be in touch with is their contract comes up next year. So I think that'll be an interesting time as we put more officers on. Now it's time to keep them. So we're going to have some discussions with mayor and his staff and the council about keeping our officers, right? Because they're expensive to recruit and train. And I think that'll be one of the keys also.
My other issue, chief, as we go forward is the diversity, you know, in the department and especially within your leadership team. I think I've talked with you in the past on, you know, recruiting and retaining and having, you know, more minority officer, you know, take the opportunity to move up in the ranks. One of the things over the years has been said that, you know, some of the youngest officers, you know, you know, by doing overtime, you know, don't really see a career path, you know, within the department. Can you address that?
Sure. So that career path, they limit themselves by working, working, working all this overtime. So I have to encourage these folks and I have already, you know, you have to take the next sergeant's exam, right? And you have to study for it and you have to prepare for it. And you have to make it to the next level, to the lieutenant's level. When you get to the lieutenant's level, that's an area where I can begin to tap you or or touch you for different assignments or different deputy chief positions. You have to get to that level by contract. There's an active captain's list and there's an active lieutenant's list. I think the lieutenant's list does have folks of color on there and folks of Spanish descent on there too. So I don't intend on canceling those. I intend on continuing those, those two tests, the two lists, because they take so long to get to. You know, I like the kids that are in the middle of these these lists too. They're, they got good hearts and they go and go and go and could have had a bad day on the time of testing. So I have every intention of extending those lists.
Good, because I think that's, that would certainly give you an opportunity, you know, for. Good, because I think that's, um, that would certainly give you an opportunity, uh, you know, for, uh, more involvement and physically, um, the younger, um, police officers seeing an opportunity to have a career here for us in the future. Um, so those are my two issues which, um, I went, oh, that's one other, one other thing. You know, when you talked about NRZ and attending the NRZ meetings, most of the time the NRZ meetings, you know, it's, um, attended by, um, the, you know, the community service officers in that area. And we, you know, love to see more of the, uh, the command staff who are around this area to attend NRZ meetings, you know, with the community service officers. Um, would that be something you'd be interested in doing?
Well, more than interested, I, I believe I've already told them and I'm sure they might be listening some places that, um, you know, they, they need to see a star or two out there and they need to see a three star out there. Um, we need, they need to know we're paying attention to their concerns. If we can't give them a instant solution, we're certainly gonna have it in our minds to, um, create a solution for them in the future, but they need to see upper command. Um, which is, um, we're sending captains or CSOs. They're gonna see, um, folks of bigger rank.
Great. Thank you, Chief. You know, and, you know, um, one of the things, um, I certainly do not need to defend you because you certainly have way more experience than I do. Uh, you know, regarding policing issues and you've certainly been around the police, uh, you know, career infrastructure for way more than decades than I have been involved. But one of the things I will have to say, you know, um, we are very, in a very sensitive, uh, time right now between, you know, the local state and federal government. And after reading so many articles, you know, just read one this morning in the Hartford Current, you know, legislator, you know, made a comment. You know, and start getting, um, doxing. One of the things, you know, um, being an immigrant myself, I'm very sensitive, you know, to what is going on in, in our community right now. But we also have to make sure that, you know, whatever policies and rules we have, that you do follow so. And not being disrespectful to Councilman Mitchum or anything, but I do understand the sensitiveness of, uh, in the internet and, um, how this is broadcast. Want to make sure that, you know, it's noted that we do follow our regulations here in the city. So if Councilman, um, Mitchum took any offense in stepping in, I just have to make sure that, you know, our policies and the chief have followed our policies in the city for decades. He was police chief before. He's been working with the state. He's now come back to share his experience with us. And, you know, want to make sure that, um, as this goes out on the internet, as this, you know, interview goes out on, um, you know, Facebook and everywhere up, it's duly noted that, um, the city of Hartford, you know, will have its police chief follow all rules and regulations. So I just want to address that sensitive, uh, subject that has come up. And I don't believe seeing any more questions, um, so I am looking forward to see if anyone, uh, will put forth a, uh, a resolution, an emotion on the floor, if there's any more comments or, uh, anything else to do with this subject.
I, I make a motion, Council President. I'll make a motion to send back favorably the appointment of, uh, permanent appointment of Chief Revella.
Second. Oh, there's a lot of second. My poor assistant, wait a second, Councilman Mitchum, my poor assistant is gonna figure out who seconded all of this in our report. Okay.
I think it was Molly. I think she was like a, a millisecond ahead.
I'll yield, I'll yield to Molly.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that, uh, when the report is written out, we properly have it recorded. Who seconded this comment? Who seconded the motion on the floor? Okay, all right, discussion, Councilman Mitchum, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. And, uh, you know, I take no particular offense to being interrupted. For what it's worth, I'm used to it. Uh, but I, I want to, I want to address the underlying question and explain why I'm gonna vote no on this resolution. I mean, there's no question that Chief Revella is qualified to do the job. He's done it so much. I, I, I wouldn't make an argument counter to that. But we are in a moment in this country unlike any that any of us have lived in this country. And our immigrant communities in particular, but not just them, are facing an existential threat from the federal government, right? Uh, we have a president who has already sent actual troops to two cities for no good reason. Who, who, uh, does not under, by being worried about the sensitivity of the issue or being worried about is an inch that they will take. Every time that we hesitate, they will take space. And it seems that this administration is particularly focused on, from what I can tell, cities that are majority cities of color. And if they haven't gone to us, it's just because we're a small majority city of color. I think it's coming. And at this point, the only, I would say, the only right answer to the question that I asked that the chief did not answer would be to speak up and very boldly and vociferously say, I will allow residents of the city of Hartford to be kidnapped or assaulted. We're acting without authority of law. We're at that point where we need someone to defend us. Right now, members of the public are out defending themselves. They are looking for ICE. They are telling people or protecting people from ICE. And we need to depend on our police. And if our candidate for police chief can't say, I will prosecute, I will arrest people who kidnap and assault Hartford residents, then he is not rising, which was terrible. But our job as leaders is to be, is, is to do the thing regardless. And so I say that every police chief in this country and certainly the police chief of this city should say they will not only not cooperate with ICE, but if ICE acts without a warrant, then ICE is doing crime and they will arrest ICE. And anyone who wants to can dox me. Josh Michtam, 135 Madison Ave. I do not care. Our job is to stand up for our residents. And I'm sorry to say it, but if our police chief can't say that he will stand up for our residents, he's not the guy.
Any other discussion? Seeing or hearing no other discussion, those in favor, both those in favor of, um, sending back to the council overall body for a recommendation in appointing James C. Revella for the police chief. Those in favor saying hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Any? Uh, two, I'm sorry, how many? Two nays? Okay. And any abstention? Okay, the eyes have it. Congratulations, uh, Chief, Chief Revella. And, uh, we'll be sending back favorable to the overall council body, uh, favorable recommendation, um, that you will be, uh, to be retained as the next police chief in the city of Hartford. Again, I want to thank you so very much for your service. I want to thank you for coming before this body, you know, and answering the questions on behalf of the council members. So seeing that there's only item on the agenda, we have no other item. Uh, I am definitely looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I second the motion to adjourn. Thank you, Chief, for joining us and thank you.
Welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
Night. Thank you.